Good evening. I now call the February 12th, 2025 meeting of the Hampton City School Board to order. Ms. Chauvinot, would you please call for the role?
Ms. Alfanja?
Here.
Dr. Banks Gray?
Here.
Ms. Cherry?
Here.
Mr. Kilgore?
Here.
Dr. Mason?
Here.
Mr. Samuels?
Present.
Dr. Woodhouse?
Here. Let the record show that all the board members are present this evening, and we are also joined by our student representative Caleb Lucas. Now moving on to our opening remarks, I'd like to call on our student representative, Caleb Lucas, to introduce our student speaker, who will lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance and provide opening remarks.
Thank you, Dr. Woodhouse. Good evening, everybody. I ask that you all would please stand as we welcome Ms. Cheyenne Clements to lead us in our pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Cheyenne. And we know that you have something prepared for us?
Yes.
All right, the floor is yours.
Good evening, school board members, Dr. Haynes and Division Leadership Team members. My name is Cheyenne Clements, and I am a fifth grader at Barron Elementary School, and I'm gonna read an original poem written by my mother, my grandmother, and I. I am fortunate to live in a land that cares about the young and the old, a land that provides me with a good education and a building that's free of mold. The educators do all they can to teach one and all by supplying their knowledge and support so we can excel and not fall. Education is so important, and we require it to reach our goals, to live a life that meets our needs and its values we can uphold, with all that's been granted to me in this land of the free and the brave. I am so thankful to have the opportunity to progress, stay focused, and to know how to behave. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Cheyenne. That's very, very, very powerful words, and I hope that that sticks with you all throughout your academic career. So I do have a few questions for you. Can you tell us again your school and grade?
I go to Barron Elementary School, and I am in the fifth grade.
Awesome. And what is your favorite subject?
My favorite subject is science.
Science, awesome, awesome. And what are some hobbies that you have outside of school?
I like going to dance and hanging out with my mom and my grandmother and going to church.
I love that. What do you want to be when you grow up?
I want to be a lawyer so I can help people who are in trouble.
Awesome, me too, me too. And finally, can you let us know who's here with you and have them stand, please?
Yes. I have my dad, my mom, my principal, my brother, my sister, my grandmothers, and my friends. Barron Village.
Well, I want to thank you, Cheyenne, for that amazing poem and for, you know, having this amazing conversation with me. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much, Cheyenne, for sharing with us on this evening that wonderful poem. Would you come back to the mics, please? Thank you. Are there any comments from any board members?
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Cheyenne, that was an awesome poem. Thank you so much for sharing tonight, and I wasn't sure if everyone heard you say that it was an original poem written by you, your mother, and your grandmother, so that just makes it so much more special and so much more nice for us to hear on tonight. Thank you again for sharing. Thank you to all the supporters who came, such a big support that is here for you tonight. You are a wonderful student, and it's just good to see you come out with so much support and share with the board. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, thank you. I just want to say thank you so much, and thank you to your village for coming out, but thank you to your parents, especially for sharing her with us tonight. I did get a chance to kind of see a little bit of you during COVID because your mom had you in some of your videos and stuff like that, and she was celebrating with her Barron team and all or whatever, so I've just kind of watched you grow just a little bit, so it's great to see you actually in person, so thank you very much. And I watched mom as she was just smiling so proud as you were reading your poem, and she was mouthing the words right behind you. But thank you so much for being here with us.
Thank you.
Dr. Tina Banks Gray?
Thank you. Ms. Cheyenne, it was such a pleasure to meet and talk to you this evening and the rest of the family. I knew she was going places just by the way she's dressed. She was the best dressed person in this doggone auditorium this evening. And when she said she has ambition to be a lawyer, I'm only looking for you because I have a driving problem. I don't drive fast, I drive too slow. So I may need a lawyer when you get there, so I'll be looking for you, and I know that you're definitely going a lot of places in this world. Thank you so much for sharing that phenomenal poem, and just make sure that you stay ahead of the actual game because you are a phenomenal young lady, and I appreciate everything that you gave us this evening.
Thank you.
Any other board members? Ms. Cherry?
Yes, thank you. I just want to say I'm honored that I got to take a picture with you because I know in the next few years, we're gonna hear even more wonderful things about you, and I'm gonna be able to pull that picture out that Dr. Tina Banks Gray took, and I'm gonna say I knew her when. So thank you so much. Appreciate you.
Thank you.
Mr.?
Thank you, Dr. Woodhouse. Cheyenne, have you decided where you're going to middle school?
Yes, I really want to go to Jones Magnet Middle School.
Awesome. That's a great school. You know the reason why?
Why?
My daughter attended that school, and she will be graduating from Norfolk State University May, in a few months. So we see the future in you.
Thank you.
Dr. Mason said he wants you to go to Hampton University.
Your future's at Hampton University, not Norfolk State.
Again, thank you so much, Cheyenne, for your coming this evening and sharing that wonderful poem with us. Thank you for bringing your family and friends along with you and the staff from Barron School for coming as well. We thank all of you for being here this evening. Okay, now moving on to item 1.03 from our agenda, adoption of the agenda. Do I have a motion to approve the agenda?
Mr. Chair, move approval of the agenda as presented.
Second.
Has been approved by, has been moved by Mr. Kilgore and seconded by Mr. Samuels, that we will adopt the agenda. Do I have, do I, that we adopt the agenda?
Is there any discussion?
Yes, sir.
Yes.
Okay, I just wanted to, since we're looking at adopting this agenda, I just wanted to address some issues that have come up about this agenda. This agenda has not changed from the regularly scheduled meeting we were supposed to have last week, you know, and I think we need to address that simply because we ask our students to take responsibility for their actions, we ask our teachers to do it, our administration, and you should expect nothing less of your board. So I just want to say, first of all, we apologize that we so abruptly had to change the meeting last week. It was not due to the superintendent, the administration, Ms. Goral, the school board attorney, the school board clerk. It was a misstep on behalf of this board, so we do apologize, but I can assure you that this Wednesday, February 5th, agenda is the exact same agenda as this today's agenda. So I just want to make that clear. Thank you.
Are there any other discussions? Hearing, Ms. Chauvinot, would you please call for the vote?
Um, Mr. Chair?
Yes. Is there?
No, I'm sorry, go ahead. No, you can go ahead. I'm sorry, it was something.
Ms. Chauvinot.
Ms. Alfanja?
Aye.
Tina Banks, oh no. Dr. Banks Gray?
Aye.
Sorry. And Cherry?
Aye.
Joe Kilgore?
Aye.
Dr. Mason?
Aye.
Mr. Samuels?
James Samuels.
James Samuels?
Aye.
Dr. Reginald Woodhouse?
Thank you. Aye. Motion carries. We now move on to item two for our agenda, recognitions. I will now turn it over to Ms. Kelly Coral, Executive Director of the Public Relations and Marketing, who will be assisted by Dr. Tina Banks Gray this evening. Ms. Goral.
Yes, sir. Well, thank you, Chair, Dr. Woodhouse, Vice Chair Ms. Alfanja, members of our school board, Superintendent Dr. Haynes, and members of our Hampton City Schools family. I'm actually gonna ask Dr. Banks Gray to just wait a few moments before heading to the microphone to assist with our student and staff recognitions. We're gonna actually start this evening by doing our recognition portion with our School Board Appreciation Month. The month of February marks the annual observance of School Board Appreciation Month, a time to salute the work of school board members and celebrate public education. Each year, the Virginia School Boards Association, otherwise known as the VSPA, creates a theme for this annual celebration. This year's theme is Champions of Opportunity: Advocates for Excellence, which acknowledges that the school board is at the heart of the education system, guiding with kindness and care. But you all know us, and we are a little bit different sometimes, and we love a good theme, so we have actually created a second theme for this School Board Appreciation, and our theme is "Our School Board is Out of This World." So to help celebrate, students from Kraft Elementary, home of the Cubs and named after Christopher Kraft, yes, a pioneer of the NASA space program, have prepared a special performance for you. We thought that was only appropriate to ask our Kraft Cubs. So at this time, we're gonna invite our board members and Dr. Haynes. Would you, those that are sitting at the dais, please come down and sit in the audience so you can enjoy a special song. I'm gonna get out of your way, but I just have one more announcement. Y'all can sit here, I'm gonna get out of your way, I promise. I promise. All right, I'm gonna get out of the way so I'm not blocking your view, but I did want to introduce our special guest. The song this evening is "It Starts With Me." It's under the direction of our music teacher, Michelle Rayborn. Ms. Rayborn and the Kraft chorus asked me to share. We would like to thank the board members for all they do to help our schools. Without you, we could not reach for the stars, and we think you are out of this world. So without further ado, I'm gonna turn it over to Ms. Rayborn.
We're changing the world, one person at a time. We're making it better, don't you see? We're changing the world, one person at a time. The very first person is me, is me. For I know it starts with me. Yes, I know it starts with me. It starts with me. We're changing the world, one person at a time. We're making it better, don't you see? We're changing the world, one person at a time. The very first person is me, is me. For I know it starts with me. Yes, I know it starts with me. It starts with me. The lessons I learn, I will share with you, and if you share them too. The world will change, the world will turn, and it's all because I know. For I know it starts with me. Yes, I know it starts with me. Oh, I know it starts with me. Yes, I know it starts with me. It starts with me, it starts with me, it starts with me, it starts with me, it starts with me.
Before you all exit the stage, because you did such a wonderful job, but I know you've got lots of supporters here tonight, parents and your brothers and sisters and grandparents, and I saw your school principal, could everyone please stand up to be recognized? You all did an amazing job. I know the board is going to want to talk to you once they get back to their seats, but I know we have a few students that are going to help out with another part of the presentation, so if you would join Ms. Chauvinot over by the table, and then the rest of you can have a seat, and we'll finish the presentation, and then the board will have some comments for you. Yep, they can sit right there. Perfect. All right, they follow directions really well. Are you all ready now?
Yes.
Okay, so board members, I need you to walk up the stairs and line up on the stage, please. And actually, Sophia Harris is here as well, one of our other school board student representatives. Would you join on stage? She wasn't ready for that, but. All right, so in honor of School Board Appreciation Month, we are delighted to present this group with a special snow globe that was thoughtfully crafted by our talented students at Kraft Elementary under the direction of their art teacher, Nicole Acorn, as part of our "Out of This World" theme. So we're gonna have Kraft students assisting in the presentation, making this recognition even more special. Along with a special gift from Kraft, we are presenting you with additional tokens of appreciation to honor your dedication, leadership, and steadfast commitment to our schools and community. This includes a certificate from the VSPA and a small basket of goodies that brings our theme of "Our School Board is Out of This World" to life. And I'd like to publicly thank Shernita Carmona from our graphics department for creating these awesome baskets. So at this time, would we present Dr. Mason, I mean, Dr. Woodhouse with his gift, please? Next, we'd like to recognize Ms. Stephanie Jackson Alfanja, our vice chair. Next, we have Dr. Tina Banks Gray. Ms. Chauvinot is trying to give them a quiz over there, but getting them the wrong astronaut. Dr. Banks Gray, you do not look like Mr. Kilgore. Next, we have Ms. Ann Cherry. All right, Mr. Joe Kilgore. Next, we would like to recognize Dr. Richard Mason. Next, we would like to recognize Mr. Jason Samuels. And then we have small gifts of appreciation for our school board student representatives, Caleb Lucas and Sophia Harris. And they also get a blue bag, they get a snow globe. And Ms. Chauvinot, before you lose your little helper, there is one other gift bag right there, and that's actually for Dr. Haynes, even though it is School Board Appreciation, our Kraft students wanted to give one to the superintendent. So thank you again to all of our board members, our Chair, Dr. Woodhouse, our Vice Chair, Ms. Stephanie Jackson Alfanja, Dr. Tina Banks Gray, Ms. Ann Cherry, Mr. Joe Kilgore, Dr. Richard Mason, Mr. Jason Samuels, our student reps, Sophia Harris, and Caleb Lucas, for all the time you dedicate to our students and everything you do for Hampton City Schools. You truly live out our mantra of "One community, one transformation, excellence with intentionality." So let's give them a round of applause. And I'm gonna let you all return to your seats if you would like to make any remarks to our amazing students before we proceed with the rest of our recognitions. And just for the camera, one of you may want to open up the blue bag and kind of show it off. Those are the snow globes that our Kraft students made under the direction of their art teacher, Ms. Acorn. They're jumping up saying "me, me," over here. Yeah, that bag. Would you open that for us, Ms. Cherry? Aren't those cool? Dr. Woodhouse, if anyone on the board would like to make any comments?
So on behalf of the school board, I want to extend a heartfelt thank you to Ms. Rayborn and your talented students for your wonderful performance on tonight. Also thank you to Ms. Acorn for, and your students for the beautiful snow globes. Your music and artwork were a fascinating and fantastic way to help us celebrate the School Board Appreciation Month, and we truly appreciate the time, the effort, and the passion that you put into sharing your talents with us on this evening. So again, we say thank you so much. Are there any comments from any board members? Ms. Cherry?
Yes, I'd just like to say thank you to Ms. Goral and your staff for always pulling this together every year that we have been on this board and beyond. The way that you go about, along with people in graphics, in the photographers, all of your people who report to you have always made this board very proud in terms of recognizing us. And I know there are many boards around this state of Virginia that represent 1.2 million students throughout Virginia, but I can say without hesitation that I can't think of a better board recognition ceremony than the way you provide it and work in conjunction with our schools, with our administrators, and with our parents. Give yourselves a hand, and our teachers. Thank you so much.
That was very kind of you. I will say, with the board meeting switching from one week to the other, you all got a little flat, we had to keep inflating you. So if you ever need to know how to blow up a school board member, you just need to use a straw.
Dr. Woodhouse? Yes. Mr. Mason?
I do want to say thank you to the students. Thank you for that wonderful song, and that really resonated with me when you talk about making a difference and making a change in the world, and you have to start with one person at a time, and that person is certainly you. And we all have to take a look at ourselves in the mirror. As Michael Jackson says, "He started with the man in the mirror." And so that certainly resonated with me. And so that certainly resonated with me. Ms. Gole, once again, you are a rock star, you and your team. I tell you, you've made us special agents. We've been baseball stars.
I don't know what you're going to be next year.
And now we're astronauts. So we're out of this world. So thank you so much, greatly appreciated. It's hard work, but it certainly is good work, and I appreciate the appreciation. Thank you.
Ms. Tina Banks Gray?
Ms. Kelly Gole, thank you so much. You always, and the staff, y'all always just go above and beyond the call of duty of making us feel special during this month, so thank you so much. Now to our actual singers, can y'all stand up one more time for us so we can give y'all When I tell you, y'all knocked it out of this park, out of the park, and y'all are just absolutely amazing, and you sound angelic. So thank y'all for spending this evening with us. How long did y'all actually practice for that? What, a year?
Five.
Five, how many practices? Five, I don't believe it. I would think y'all practiced for five years, because y'all nailed it. So thank y'all so much, family. Thank y'all for coming out to support them as well. We appreciate you.
Any other comments? Ms. Gole?
All right, well, it's time to move on to our other recognitions this evening. So at this time, with Dr. Tina Banks Gray, proceed to the microphone on stage to assist with this evening's recognitions. And you may need to move the microphone just a little bit back. There we go. She has danced for us before, yes. All right. So our first recognition this evening, I'm going to call Ms. Tracy Born and her students, Scott Briggs, Matt Beaver, Will Davenport, Phoenix Harris, Madison Newton, Natalie Harris, Paige LaRoche, and Wyatt Fatkin to join me at the podium.
Don't stand behind me. Come this way. Perfect.
All right.
Stay right there on this side so they can see you.
All right, so many of these students are not strangers to the school board. You have seen them at multiple film festivals, you know Ms. Tracy Born, and they are here again because they have done wonderful things. So these students, under the direction of Ms. Born, the theater director of the On Stage Performing Arts Academy, participated in the Virginia Thespian Society 2024 Virginia Thespian Festival themed "Find Your Light" that took place from January 4th to 6th in McLean, Virginia. And I think that was a snow day, and we were worried about you all coming back. Is that correct? Yeah? Yes, yes, yes.
It was bright. What was it? Deep Roots, Bright Future.
Oh, was that what it was?
Deep Roots, Bright Future.
Deep Roots, Bright Future. So renowned for nurturing emerging talents and fostering a vibrant theater community, the festival offered a rich lineup of experiences. Highlights included the Thespie competition for showcasing acting prowess, the collaborative one-act competition, and workshops led by industry professionals. Aspiring theater performers seized opportunities through college auditions and scholarship auditions. The festival also featured grand mainstage events where iconic productions came to life. Attendees experienced growth, creativity, and connections, forming lasting bonds with like-minded theater enthusiasts. So we're recognizing these students before you tonight because our students excelled at the festival. Congratulations to these exceptional students who received Thespie Superior Awards. First, we have Scott Briggs, if Scott would step forward, who received an award for solo acting and costume construction. Let's give him a round of applause. Next, we have Matt Beaver, who received an award for solo acting. Will Davenport. Will Davenport received an award for musical theater duet and musical theater dance group. Phoenix Harris. Phoenix received an award for musical theater duet. Natalie Harris received an award for musical theater dance, solo, duet, and group. Paige LaRoche received an award for musical theater dance, duet, and group. Then we've got Wyatt Fatkin, who received an award for top actor. Madison Newton. Madison received an award for short film, as well as an award for best in festival. And then Ms. Sophia Harris, who you all are no stranger, she won the scholarship from the Thespie, correct? And what was the amount of the scholarship? A thousand-dollar scholarship.
Right.
Dr. Banks Gray, I turn it over to you.
All right, now this is your time to shine. Would you all please join me on the stage by the microphone? So everybody can see you. Y'all don't get shy now, y'all are actors, what in the world?
I'll say, this is your singing and dancing time, Dr. Banks Gray. They will join you.
Don't get me started. All right, before I present each of you a certificate of recognition and a coin, I want to say how proud we are of each of you, and thank you, Ms. Born, for representing Hampton City Schools and your school in such a positive way at the Virginia Thespian Festival. Let's hear it for them. So on behalf of the Hampton School Board and our phenomenal superintendent, Dr. Raymond L. Haynes, please accept these coins, certificates of recognition for this outstanding accomplishment. You make us proud. Now I can give them a round of applause. Hand these out and give these to y'all really quickly. So the first certificate is for Mr. Scott Briggs. Thank you. Here you go. We have Matt Beaver. And Phoenix Harris. And next we have Natalie Harris. And last one, we have Madison Newton. Congratulations.
There it is. Perfect.
And Dr. Banks Gray, Sophia Harris is, for some reason, did not make the, make it here tonight, but we'll make sure she gets it, and we definitely know where to find her.
Correct, 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 correct. Again, congratulations to these students. At this time, if there are any parents, teachers, administrators, or fellow students and audience supporting these young people, we ask you to please stand at this time to be recognized.
And before they all return to their seat, I'm going to put Ms. Born on the spot, and ask if she'd like to make any comments about...
Please, Ms. Born.
...her students. Again, she's theater, so it should be natural.
There's no shortage of things to brag about with these students. They continue to show up and show out everywhere we go, so they continuously make me proud, make Kikatan proud, and make Hampton City Schools proud.
And I recognize quite a few of them in the superintendent's holiday video as well. I believe so, yes. They have some great dancing skills. They're all laughing. Well, thank you all so much. Congratulations. You may have a seat.
Congratulations, everybody. Thank you, congratulations, congratulations.
All right, our next recognition this evening is Ms. Betsy McAllister. Would Ms. McAllister please join me down front by the podium? And if anybody knows Ms. Betsy McAllister, she does not like to be honored this way, so she's dying inside right now. But even though I think everyone knows who the Betsy McAllister is, I need to formally introduce you, introduce her to you. Ms. McAllister is the STEM Teacher Specialist with Hampton City Schools, who is also the teacher-in-resident with the National Institute of Aerospace. In that role, she helps connect scientists at N I A and NASA with classroom teachers and students. She is being recognized this evening for receiving the prestigious Virginia Association of Science Teachers Science Educator Specialist Award at the 2024 VAST Annual Professional Development Institute. Let's give her a round of applause. Now, Betsy earned this honor for her significant contributions to science, technology, engineering, and mathematics, which we've better known as STEM education, having educated learners in formal and informal settings for over 30 years, 22 of those in the classroom. In her E I R role with N I A, she is a key member of the NASA Eclipse team and works to bring NASA resources into the K-12 classroom while designing and aligning Eclipse resources with current curricula and pacing. She's been instrumental in creating strong collaborations between NASA and STEM-related organizations within Hampton City Schools and organizing community engagement experiences such as their annual STEM Exploration Community Event. If you pay attention to email extra at all, many of those are submitted by Betsy McAllister for the great work that's being done in our schools by our students, by our staff, and she doesn't like to say by her as well, but it's definitely by her as well. So Dr. Banks Gray?
Ms. McAllister, this is your most favorite part. Can you please join me on stage? Before I present you with a certificate of recognition and a coin, I want to say that Ms. McAllister also brings real-world learning opportunities to the public through volunteer roles as commissioner with the Hampton Clean City Commission, a master naturalist, and a Hampton Master Gardener. She is truly thebomb.com. And that was not in my notes, I added that.
She did add that.
So on behalf of Hampton School Board and our superintendent, Dr. Raymond L. Haynes, please accept this coin and certificate of recognition for this outstanding accomplishment. And before Ms. McAllister, you're not going nowhere yet.
She's trying to escape her.
Before Ms. McAllister returns to her seat, if there are any teachers, administrators, or family members and audience supporting her or her work, we ask you to stand and be recognized at this time.
Congratulations.
Dr. Banks Gray?
Yes, ma'am.
If I could?
Yes, ma'am.
I know Ms. McAllister has headed out that door. So, Betsy?
She is.
Before you leave, I just want to say something. I know this is going to embarrass you, but it's okay. I have had the joy, the honor, and privilege of knowing Betsy for over 20 years.
Nice.
And for those of you who may not know her, she was even named Hampton City Schools Teacher of the Year, and the state of Virginia was looking at her for being the state teacher of the year, but there was a lot of paperwork involved and a lot of time spent to get that out. And let me tell you what she did. She said, "I would rather take that time and concentrate on my students than to fill out paperwork to be the state teacher of the year." She has always said, "Never accept mediocrity in any form," and I just want to thank you for who you are.
Oh, my gosh.
I think we can agree, we all love Betsy. All right. It is our pleasure to recognize additional educators this evening, our National Board Certified Teachers. Through National Board Certification, teachers demonstrate that their teaching meets the profession's standards for accomplished practice through rigorous, peer-reviewed, and performance-based process similar to professional certification in fields such as medicine. In achieving board certification, teachers prove their ability to advance student learning and achievement. National Board Certification is the most respected professional certification available in education and provides numerous benefits to teachers, students, and schools. It was designed to develop, retain, and recognize accomplished teachers, and to generate ongoing improvement in schools nationwide. While teacher licensure systems set the basic requirements to teach in each state, completion of the National Board Certification signifies that teachers have voluntarily, again, that's voluntarily, gone much further. National Board Certified Teachers have developed and demonstrated the advanced knowledge, skills, and practices required of an outstanding educator. And this year, we are proud to recognize three of our Hampton City School teachers who have renewed their National Board Certifications. So at this time, I would ask of Cara Hart, Elizabeth Ross, and April Tron, please join me down front. And I think it's Tran.
I don't bite, I'm trans. Is it Tran? Is it April Tran? Okay, I butchered that at first, I apologize. Oh, don't stand behind me. They want to see you, not me. They see me all the time.
All right, we're going to start with Ms. Cara Hart. Cara Hart is an elementary school teacher at Bryan Elementary School with 13 years of service in Hampton City Schools. Before transitioning into her current role, Cara worked as a qualified mental health professional, providing in-home counseling, and as a treatment counselor at a psychiatric mental institute for children. Cara is an advocacy and government relations co-chair for the Virginia School Counselor Association. She has earned the RAMP, which is Recognized ASCA Model Program designation for Bryan Elementary, and recently maintained her National Board Certification. Cara also serves as a team lead for elementary counselors, a mentor, an intern supervisor, and a member of various school and district committees. She is pursuing her educational specialist degree in advanced school counseling at Old Dominion University. Cara is committed to advocating for students and education while continuing to grow the profession. She is also the proud mother of two sons, Wilder and is it?
Colly.
Colly, who are students in Hampton City Schools. Let's hear it for Cara Hart. All right, Ms. Elizabeth Ross. That way. Oh, I was like, that way. Ms. Elizabeth Ross is a literacy support specialist at Craft Elementary. Did all your craft people stay for you? And is now in her 18th year with Hampton City Schools. She began her career as a special education teacher serving at Machen, Burbank, and Craft Elementary Schools before earning her master's degree in curriculum instruction with a focus on reading from the University of Virginia. Elizabeth has also worked as a reading specialist at Mary T. Christian Elementary School. In her current role, Elizabeth facilitates CLTs, mentors teachers, and national board candidates, co-teaches, creates resources, and collaborates with staff to enhance literacy instruction. Phew, you're making me tired. All right, behind her school-based contributions, she does more. She served on committees, developed curriculum, and presented for the Virginia Department of Education. Elizabeth is deeply passionate about building relationships with students and helping them find confidence in themselves. Let's give a big congratulations to Elizabeth Ross. And last but not least, we have Ms. April Tran, correct? Okay. It's April Tran, who brings 20 years of experience in education and currently serves as the reading specialist at Mary T. Christian Elementary School. She holds a Bachelor of Science in Psychology and Elementary Education from Hampton University... Sorry, Mr. Samuels. And a Master of Science in Reading Education from Old Dominion University. April has served in various roles that highlight her passion for literacy, including literacy support specialist at Bassett Elementary, interventionist and reading specialist in Newport News Public Schools... Thank you for coming back. ...and elementary classroom teacher in Hampton City Schools. She considers earning the National Board Certification a pivotal moment in her career as it provided an opportunity to reflect deeply on her instructional practices and the impact on student success. So let's give a big round of applause for April Tran. And I'll have you ladies...
Now, ladies, would you please join me on stage? Before I present each of you a certificate of recognition and a coin, I would like to say, we know the rigorous process to become a National Board Certified Teacher is no simple task. It certainly takes a great deal of time and effort to accomplish this feat and to keep your recognition current. We thank each of you for pushing yourself... We thank each of you for pushing yourself professionally and ultimately advancing student learning and achievement for our Hampton City School students. Job well done and bravo to you all. So, without further ado, on behalf of the Hampton School Board and our superintendent, Dr. Haynes, please accept this coin and the certificate of recognition for outstanding accomplishments. And the first one is presented to Ms. Hart. There you go, ma'am. There's your coin. Second, we have Ms. Ross. Congratulations.
Thank you.
And Ms. Tran. There you go, ma'am. Thank you so much. Appreciate it. Let's hear it for them, y'all. Let's give them a round of applause. Before you all have a seat, we would like to recognize the important guests in our audience tonight who are here to support you all. Would any family members, fellow teachers, administrators of these National Board Certified Teachers who are in the audience, please stand and be recognized? Congratulations once again. And then also is the amazing Dr. Kim Richardson. Is she here? She's not here?
She could not make it.
Well, just really quickly, Dr. Richardson, she is the Hampton City Schools Director of Induction and Development, who also oversees the National Board Certified Teacher Program, and she is a huge support to our teachers. Please join me in a round of applause to recognize our special guests and to congratulate them once again who have earned their recertification. Congratulations, ladies. You're welcome. Congratulations.
All right. Well, Chair Woodhouse, that concludes our recognitions for this evening. Thank you so much, Dr. Banks Gray.
Always a pleasure.
Thank you so much, Ms. Kilgore. At this time, I would like to ask Ms. Charbonneau and Ms. Penny to join me on stage at the In addition to being School Board Appreciation Month, next week is also School Board Clerk Appreciation Week. And so, the Board, our Board recognizes the vital work and the role that you both-- our clerk and the deputy clerk play in supporting our work. And we want to take this opportunity to express our sincere appreciation for your dedication and the hard work that you do on our behalf. Ms. Penny, I know you are new to the deputy clerk position. Thank you for taking on this role. We look forward to working with you in the near future. And as deputy clerk, I'd like to present you with this certificate. I'm gonna ask Ms. Afanjia if she will present it to you and if she will read so it can help me save my voice.
Ms. Penny, 2025 VSB A School Board Clerk Appreciation Week, February seventeenth through twenty-first, 2025. Ms. Elizabeth Penny, in appreciation of your dedication and hard work for public education through continued service to the students of the Commonwealth of Virginia. And this is signed by our VSB A Vice President and Executive Director, Ms. Gina Patterson. And we've got a token of appreciation, just a small gift card to you from our Board that's in there as well. Thank you so much.
Thank you so much.
Ms. Charbonneau, thank you for all of the hard work that you have done over this past year. We want to give you this small token of our appreciation for all that you have done and present you with this certificate.
2025 VSB A School Board Clerk Appreciation Week, February seventeenth through twenty-first, 2025. Joy Charbonneau, in appreciation of your dedication and hard work for public education through continued service to the students of the Commonwealth of Virginia. And again, it's signed by our VSB A Vice President and Executive Director, Ms. Gina Patterson. And we also have a gift card for you--
Thank you.
--as a token of our appreciation. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you. You're welcome.
And thank you. Thank you. No, it's gonna be--
Now, are there any comments from Board members? Ms. Cherry?
Um, thank you. I just want to make a comment about the recognitions. I always get excited whenever we have recognitions because I can tell you, having worked here seventeen years as PR Director, a lot of school divisions across the state do not get to recognize people for the things Hampton City Schools does. And we talked about our Theisbien students, who are just nationally known, quite honestly. And we talked about Ms. McAllister, who everybody knows and loves, and her students gained so much from having her, even in her-- in their presence. But we also talked about, um, these, these people who have come up and demonstrated their love for teaching by becoming recertified. I remember when we first took that on, Ms. Ruth and Dr. Caggianno, this National Board Certified piece. And I was hoping we could say this before they left, but you have to give kudos to the families as well because being nationally board certified is no easy task. There are hours and hours and hours that these teachers spend away from their family just trying to get this done. So, it's a big, herculean experience, but to see somebody come up and be recertified is even better. So, I just want to thank, I guess, the Hampton School Division for having us in a situation where we can always honor not mediocre, not pretty good, but the best. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Cherry. Any other comments? Next, we now move on to item three on our consent agenda. Consent agenda consists of item 3.01 Personnel Report 2025-2 and item 3.02 Minutes of the Board-- of the School Board Meeting of January eighth, 2025. Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented? So, move.
Second.
It has been moved by Mr. Samuels and seconded by Ms. Afanjia?
Yes.
All right. That we would approve the consent agenda as presented. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, Ms. Charbonneau, would you please call for the vote?
Ms. Afanjia?
Aye.
Dr. Banks Gray?
Aye.
Ms. Cherry?
Aye.
Mr. Kilgore?
Aye.
Dr. Mason?
Aye.
Mr. Samuels?
Aye.
Dr. Woodhouse?
Aye. Motion carries. We now move on to item four for our Agenda Superintendent and Staff Report. I would now turn it over to Dr. Haynes. Dr. Haynes?
Thank you, Chairman Woodhouse, Vice Chair Jackson Afanjia, members of the Board, Hampton Division Leadership Team, and the Hampton Community. For our first report this evening, Dr. Dan Bowling, our Chief Operations Officer, along with other members of his team, will report on the various capital improvement projects that have occurred across the School Division over the past year. Dr. Bowling?
We have approximately next fifty minutes to be presented. And, uh, just keep this moving right along, okay? It wouldn't be my report if I didn't. Well, good evening, Chairman Woodhouse, Vice Chair Jackson Afanjia, members of the Board, Superintendent Dr. Haynes, and honored guests. My name is Dr. Bowling, and I'm the Chief Operations Officer for Hampton City Schools, and it is my honor tonight, along with the members of my team, to present on the many wonderful improvements we've made to our School Division over the past year. In this past year, we were hard at work, having completed over twenty-five capital improvement projects that fell into a number of categories to include breezeway enclosures, academies of Hampton, media center renovations, HVAC, storefront windows and doors, painting, bathrooms, roof, flooring, ceiling, LED lights, classroom renovation, and cabinet replacements, just to name a few. Now, at this time, we would like to highlight what our department has done to help improve and transform the learning environments of Hampton City Schools. And we'd like to start with our science classroom renovations. We worked at three schools, at Jones, Sims, and Kilgore Gifted Center. And here's some pictures of the former science classrooms. If you were to step in those science classrooms, it's like stepping into a time capsule. They had not been changed since the schools were built over fifty and sixty years ago. So, they were loaded with outdated cabinetry, furniture, flooring, and boards. And more importantly, it made it really difficult for this-- for the teachers to really support, uh, 21st century science instruction. Here is one of the adjoining, uh, science prep rooms. Those are areas where we store all of our science equipment, and you can see how this was just really outdated and lacked the adequate storage to properly store those materials. So, to renovate those sixteen science classrooms and non-science prep rooms, we had to do an asbestos abatement, we had to do a demolition of the space, and we disconnected the utilities. We put in new ceilings and LED lights, decorative flooring, paint, new science cabinetry and countertops, bulletin boards and whiteboards, and of course, new classroom furniture. So, here's an example of one of those five science classrooms that were renovated at Sims. Uh, you can see the new teacher demonstration desk in the front, the new furniture, the new boards. And of course, we did all of our schools and all of those science classrooms in their school color for a little bit of that school pride. Jones Madden Middle School, here's an example of one of those five science classrooms that was renovated at that school. You can see the new decorative flooring, uh, the new paint, the new LED lights. At Kilgore Gifted Center, here's one of the six science classrooms that was renovated. You can see the new cabinetry, uh, the new countertops. But more importantly, when I was speaking of 21st century science instruction, take a look at the classroom. And now, you can see how it is set up. So, a teacher has a dedicated area for teaching, and everything's on wheels. So, you can quickly rearrange it if you want to, uh, to, you know, facilitate any activity that may be going on in the room. And then, we also have a dedicated area where students can safely conduct their lab activities that runs the perimeter of the room. Uh, here's one of those-- example of one of the non-science prep rooms. Uh, we brought it up to date. As you can see, we put in new cabinets, new shelves, so now, we can properly store all of that science material. Now, at this time, I'm gonna turn it over to Ms. Tina Sanders for Elementary School Media Centers.
Thank you, Dr. Bowling. Good evening, everyone. Hampton City Schools renovated, um, five elementary media centers. That list consisted of Aberdeen Elementary, Captain John Smith, Forest, Mary T. Christian, and Mary W. Jackson. Now, here's a couple of pictures that show what the former media centers looked like. They were outdated, crowded, outfitted with mismatched furniture. They contained old bookcases, old flooring, inadequate lighting, and just lacked the modern, colorful appeal. Now, to renovate those five elementary media centers, we removed all the books, old furniture, demoed the space, performed asbestos abatement, installed new walls, new electrical, painted, installed new carpet, new ceiling, LED lights, new bookcases, and furniture. As we go through the next five slides, you'll see a current photo from each media center highlighting the transformation. Here's the new center at Aberdeen. Here, we're highlighting the new ceilings and LED lights, just makes it bright and welcoming. All media centers were equipped with new shelving. Over a hundred and twenty new bookshelves were installed, giving us the capacity to hold over forty thousand books. A hundred and fifty-four various soft seating options were installed for students that can be easily arranged or rearranged to support a variety of instructional activities. Fifty-eight new tables and a hundred and eighty-four chairs were added to the renovated media centers. And lastly, all the media centers were painted and carpeted with school colors in a manner that improved visual appeal of the space. Mr. Coburny?
Thank you, Ms. Sanders. As we move on tonight, we're gonna touch on the academies of Hampton. Uh, we did Phoebus High School and Bethel High School. We're gonna start with the Freshman Learning Academy at Phoebus High School. Uh, the three former classrooms were small and dated in appearance. They lacked, uh, space and modern amenities for the Freshman Learning Academy. So, in order to transform these environments, we had to do asbestos abatement and demolition of those spaces. We installed a new electrical system, new HVAC, new walls, new windows, uh, new ceiling, LED lights, painting of the space, new decorative flooring, and new furniture and instructional equipment. As you can see here, the new spaces were designed with a larger instructional, uh, space with a modern 21st century appearance. The new design also included extended learning areas, uh, where the teachers and students can meet for, uh, small group work. And the new classroom spaces provided students with a modern college-like environment that supports their curriculum. As we move on to Bethel High School Simulation Lab, in order to transform those environments, once again, we had to do asbestos abatement and demolition. We removed the old HVAC systems. We installed new windows and a new wall system, new ceiling grids, ceiling tiles, decorative lighting, new LED lights, painting of the space, new decorative carpet, new boards, and new furniture. So, this old classroom, uh, space was actually an old shop classroom. It had been divided into two classrooms, and it had multiple, uh, storage rooms off to the sides of it. So, here's a shot of the new simulation lab that was-- it was designed and built to be a large classroom, uh, space for the students that contains a number of first responder, uh, experiences for those students, and also includes a new nine-one-one call center. As you can see, the monitors on the back wall for that call center. The simulation lab also contains a classroom space for that instruction and an ambulance simulator, as you see there on the left. The ambulance simulator allows the students to be fully immersed in numerous first responder scenarios. As we move on, the space also contains a small house where the students will learn crime scene investigation skills. And that house has various rooms inside that can be staged to enable the students to practice their CSI techniques and procedures. Ms. Sanders?
Yes, sir. The Student Driver Education Facility at Phoebus High School was renovated. Here are a couple of pictures that show what the former driving course looked like. The perimeter fencing and the driving course pavement were old, damaged, and just in need of major repair. Now, the former building was in poor condition as well and required an extensive overhaul to regain its full functionality. To renovate the driver education building and driving range, we removed all the furniture and unwanted materials, performed asbestos abatement, installation of a new roof, windows, restroom renovation, new HVAC, new ceramic tile, paint, flooring, and LED lights, added new classroom furniture, a new perimeter fence, and the resurfacing of the pavement and relining of the driving range. Here's a bird's eye view of what the new educational building looks like now. The renovation included a new roof, new metal cap, windows, lighting, and paint. We also renovated the interior by painting it throughout, adding new flooring throughout, LED lights, permethium board. And then, the driving range observational and classroom spaces were designed to maximize instructional space and were outfitted-- outfitted with new furniture. Here's a bird's eye view of what the driving range looks like now. It is relined and repaved to provide students with a real-life driving experience.
All right, thank you, Ms. Sanders. All right, we're gonna move on to the breezeway enclosures. We did two breezeways this past summer, one at Langley Elementary School and one at Asbury Elementary. As you can see here, the former breezeway connections exposed the students and staff to the elements, uh, when moving-- when moving between the buildings. Not only that, it created safety concerns for those students and staff members during school hours. So, in order to transform those learning environments, we had to do the drawing of architectural plans. We had to demo the existing structure. We had to cut into the existing school buildings, uh, integrating, uh, building surfaces, building of the main connecting structure, replacing and enlarging sidewalks, and also lawn and landscaping repairs. So, as you can see here, the new Asbury Breezeway added over twenty-one hundred square feet to their building. As we move to the rear entry of the Asbury Breezeway, it helps to modernize the overall appearance of the building while improving the curb appeal. And as we move inside the breezeway, it has a direct, uh, decorative ceramic tile floor with security doors located at each end of that breezeway. And it also has an enclosure that greets students with an open and well-lit space that boasts the decorative ceiling and secure entry for the visitors. So, we move to Langley. You can see they-- we added over twenty-eight hundred square feet to their building. And at the rear of that Langley breezeway connection, it provides an alternate and attractive secondary entrance to the building. As you move inside, the breezeway connection provides the students and staff and visitors with a modern and inviting atmosphere upon entering the building. And the Langley breezeway connection contains numerous extended learning, uh, spaces, a renovated main office, and various meeting rooms. Dr. Bowe?
All right. Hampton City Schools is proud to announce that we have a new transportation facility, uh, which is located at 2001 Aluminum Avenue. In the picture here, you can see the two older former buildings that were there. They were very aged and visually unappealing. Uh, inside the building, it lacked the necessary space in order to house our transportation department, and it needed-- uh, we really didn't even have, uh, modern restroom facilities out there. Looking at the bus lot itself, the pavement was in, in poor condition. Uh, it had lots of cracks. It was patched. You had potholes everywhere, very limited exterior lighting, and the fence-- You had potholes everywhere, very limited exterior lighting, and the fencing was in poor shape. So to renovate this area, we had to demo the space. We had to install new fencing and an automatic gate. We did paving and new striping. We installed new exterior lights with security cameras. Of course, we put in a brand-new building with a new bus wash station, and then we outfitted that building, of course, with new furniture. So here's an aerial view looking down on that brand-new fifteen thousand square foot transportation building, which is large enough now to house the entire transportation department and meet all of their needs. As you come into the building, we have a beautiful reception area now to greet our guests. We have four large restroom facilities within the building. Elsewhere in the building, you'll find out that we have training rooms, conference room, break room for the drivers, camera rooms, supply rooms, dispatch offices, and routing rooms. Here's one of the eleven office spaces that can be found in the building. Of course, you can see the new furniture there as well. An aerial view looking down at the bus lot itself, you get an idea of the overall size of that bus lot. You can see all the new paving, the new striping, the dedicated parking for our drivers on the side, the new fencing, exterior lighting cameras. And then way up in the corner, you can see the bus wash station itself. Now, we did have a number of other projects that didn't make our slideshow tonight, but we did want to share those with you very quickly. We installed a new digital marquee at Sims. We replaced two roofs at Asbury and Bassett. We installed a new school-wide HVAC system at Bassett. We installed sixteen hundred new LED lights and replaced the ceiling grid system at a number of our schools. We renovated eight restrooms at Asbury and Langley, painted the interior and exterior Aberdeen, renovated four classrooms at Bethel, painted the hallway lockers at Eaton. And of course, we are continuing to work with the city of Hampton to remove unused portable classrooms, or the PC stands for, within our division. We have replaced ninety-three exterior windows at Asbury and Langley, and we also upgraded their fire alarm system. Now, at this time, I'm going to have Mr. Coburn load up part two of the presentation. I just got, ah, gotcha, see? But that concludes tonight's presentation, and I'll go ahead at this time and open it up for any questions or comments from the board.
If I could say, like my grandson always say, wow, what a great presentation. Are there any comments or questions from the board members? Mr. Kilgore?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. Dr. Bowlen, you and your team, it's one of my favorite presentations every year because it's just amazing what you do and all that you take on every year. All I can say about the simulation lab at Bethel is that is super cool stuff. I'm always impressed that we find so much space that we repurpose and it becomes instructional space or usable space for the students. So kudos on that, and thousands of square feet. And over the years, it's, you know, in the hundreds of thousands of square feet, seems like, especially at Phoebus. But I also really want to compliment you on the transportation facility. I was on the board when we leased the property, and so it was just fence and gravel. So to see it now to where it really is an impressive facility, both building and lot, just kudos for that. Very impressive and very much appreciate all your efforts.
Thank you.
Mr. Samuels?
Thank you, Chairman, Dr. Woodhouse. I'm just elated to see all the transformation, you know, that have taken place over this last year. And I'm just piggybacking on what Joe says about the transportation facility, where we were leasing that facility, and the board asked a question to the board attorney at that time, Nancy Reeves. Can't we just ask if that property is for sale? And next thing you know, we're the owner of that property, and look at what, how we have transformed that dusty road, just a space, into that modern facility. And we are, not just we, but the entire executive team is forward-thinking, what's next? Because we have to anticipate that this school division is going to continue to grow. Unfortunately, we are landlocked, so we have to look within the current structures and buildings that we have, and how can we utilize those spaces more efficiently to meet the needs of our future. One of the things that's so impressed with me is the flooring, the new flooring that is now installed, especially when it comes to the carpet, those removable carpet. If they're spilled, if they're damaged, you can easily remove them and replace them. So once again, it's forward-thinking, be more, more efficient and cost-effective. And I'm just, I can't wait for the next five years as it relates to your strategic plan for the next five years. I am looking forward to what are we going to do to not only attract and retain teachers and professional and qualified teachers, but what are we doing in Hampton City School to attract families and children to move to this city and school division to take advantage of the amenities that we have, not just the academies, but the facilities that we have. And so kudos to you for always being forward-thinking, thinking beyond the twenty-first century for this community. Kudos, man.
Thank you. Well, I'm glad to hear saying that you want to be involved with that because on our next meeting, during the work session of the school board, I look very forward to going over that long-term capital improvement plan, and of course, getting your input on that and seeing what direction the board may have on, on the development of that next four-year plan.
Any other, Dr. Mason?
Just want to say kudos to you, Dr. Bowlen, and your team. Looking at the work that is done is absolutely amazing. I know we had said we wanted to be very intentional with our elementary schools because we put so much into the academies and some of the middle schools, and I know some of our elementary schools felt left out. But we had to be very intentional and strategic in what we had to do because of the funding that was available. And so you all did quite a bit with very little. So we want to say thank you so much for looking at the bottom line as related to the dollar, but not sacrificing the quality and giving our students a quality place to call their own, rather than at school. So thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
Well said.
Any other board members? Would we like, well, any questions from our student rep?
I would just like to commend the work that has been done this far. Looking from a student's viewpoint, this is a lot of good work being done. This is a very good opportunity to allow students to see, you know, some upgrades and look from, from a student's viewpoint, seeing things that could increase their ability to learn, increase their ability to, increase their desire to learn. And that's something that I see, something that I take to heart. I think that's a very good capital campaign that we're going, that's going on. And I want to thank you. I want to thank Hampton City Schools. The students are watching, the students see what is going on. And we are thankful, and we are looking towards what will be done next.
Thanks, sir.
Again, I want to say thank you, Dr. Bowlen. Wonderful job, great work you're doing. At this time, Dr. Haynes?
I just want to take one just quick second. I just want to remind everybody that we have a wonderful pamphlet that we have summarized those projects into. So please take this around and carry it around in your pocket or purse, and as you can pull it out and show it off to everybody.
Thank you, Dr. Bowlen, Ms. Sanders, and Mr. Coburn. What a great presentation.
I have, Chairman Woodhouse, would I be, have an, a question to the superintendent as to make sure that you mark your calendar for us to do a tour of these facility in the near future, sir?
Absolutely. We will make that happen, sir.
Thank you, sir.
Like that.
Mr. Chair, for our final report, Ms. Brittany Branch, our chief financial officer, will provide a business and finance report for December twenty twenty-four.
Good evening, Chair Woodhouse, Vice Chair Afanjah, school board members, Dr. Haynes of the Hampton community. Tonight, I am presenting the monthly operating rating report for December twenty twenty-four. December is a short month for us, so not a lot of activity. But in December, we did receive thirty-four million dollars in revenue, with the largest revenue source being our local contribution. As of the end of December, we have received over forty-three percent of our budgeted revenues. On the expenditures and encumbrances, they totaled thirty-five million for the month, and cumulative amounts amounted to one hundred and sixty-eight million at the end of December. Our largest spending category continues to be instruction, and then beyond, behind that was administration, attendance, and health. And by the end of December, we utilized over fifty-one percent of our budget. And just to compare that to last fiscal year, we were a little over fifty percent in fiscal year twenty twenty-four. And as always, you do have a report of all the transfers to and from the technology classification for December as well. And that completes tonight's monthly board report.
Thank you, Ms. Branch. Do I have any comments from any board members or any questions? Do I have any, do I have any questions from our student rep? Right. Well, again, thank you so much, Ms. Branch.
Chairman Woodhouse, that concludes the superintendent and staff reports.
Okay, thank you, Dr. Haynes. We now move on to item five from our agenda, deliberation. The deliberation agenda consists of only one item this evening, item five point zero one, communication lease agreement for Mary Peak Elementary School. Dr. Bowlen is presenting this item to the board this evening. Dr. Bowlen?
All right, well, good evening again. T-Mobile has requested the school board's approval to upgrade a number of its older cell antennas on cell towers owned by Crown Castle located at Mary Peak Elementary School. There is no groundwork associated with this request and therefore not eligible for any rental fee increase. In accordance with the contractual agreement, T-Mobile must obtain school board approval for any work may begin. Therefore, Crown Castle consent forms have been reviewed and provided for the board's approval. If it is the will of the board, we ask that the item be moved to action on tonight's agenda.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Bowlen. Do I have any questions from, or comments from board members? Mr. Kilgore?
Mr. Chair, given the request to move to action, I move that deliberation item five point zero one be moved to action item six point zero nine.
Second.
I have a motion from Mr. Kilgore and a second from Mr. Samuels to move item five point zero one from deliberation to action item five point zero two, I mean, five point zero nine. Is there any discussion?
Six point zero nine.
Six point zero, what did I say? Six point zero nine, I'm so sorry. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, Ms. Charbonneau, will you please call for the vote? Losing my voice.
You are, Ms. Cherry?
Aye.
Dr. Banks Gray?
Aye.
Ms. Afanjah?
Aye.
Mr. Samuels?
Aye.
Mr. Kilgore?
Aye.
Dr. Mason?
Aye.
Dr. Woodhouse?
Aye, motion carries. We now move on to item six from our agenda, item for action. Items for action this evening include the following. Six point zero one, V S B A Code of Conduct for School Board Members. Six point zero two, Revision of School Board Policy, IKA, Grading System. Six point zero three, Revision of School Board Policy, D L C, Expense Reimbursement. Six point zero four, Revision of School Board Policy, D L C dash R, Expense Reimbursement Regulations. Six point zero five, New School Board Policy, G B P, Reading Specialists. Six point zero six, Revision of School Board Policy, E E A A, Student Transportation. Six point zero seven, Revision of School Board Policy, J O, Student Records. Six point zero eight, Revision of School Board Policy, G E G, J E G, Exclusion and Exemption from Compulsory School Attendance. Six point zero nine, Communication Lease Agreement for Miss, for Mary Peak Elementary School. So what is the pleasure of the board?
Mr. Chair, I move that the board approve item, action item six point zero one.
Second.
It has been moved from, for, from Ms. Afanjah, and second, from Mr. Kilgore, that the board will approve action item six point zero one. Ms. Charbonneau, would you please call for the vote? Is, well, is there any discussion from the board, first? Is there any discussion from the board? Okay. Hearing none, Ms. Charbonneau, would you please call for the vote?
Ms. Afanjah?
Aye.
Dr. Banks Gray?
Aye.
Ms. Cherry?
Aye.
Mr. Kilgore?
Aye.
Dr. Mason?
Aye.
Mr. Samuels?
Aye.
Dr. Woodhouse?
Aye, motion carries.
Mr. Chair, I move that we approve action items six point zero two through six point zero nine as a block.
Second.
It has been moved by Ms. Afanjah and second by Mr. Samuels, that the board would approve action item six point zero two through six point zero nine as a block. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, Ms. Charbonneau, would you please call for the vote?
Ms. Afanjah?
Aye.
Dr. Banks Gray?
Aye.
Ms. Cherry?
Aye.
Mr. Kilgore?
Aye.
Dr. Mason?
Aye.
Mr. Samuels?
Aye.
Dr. Woodhouse?
Aye, motion carries. Next, we now move to item seven from our agenda, hearing of any delegations or presentations or written communication or petitions. I have received two request forms to address the board on tonight. So Ms. Charbonneau, would you please read the protocol?
Citizens are invited to address the school board on matters of public concern about the school division. Speaker forms are available prior to the start of the meeting. If you wish to address the school board, please complete the form and give it to the clerk by six forty-five PM on the day of the meeting. Each individual will have three minutes to speak. At the end of your time, you will hear a buzzer. All comments shall be directed to the school board. Speakers may not yield their time to another. Speakers should address the school board with decorum on policy issues. Comments shall relate to agenda items or matters germane to the business duties of the school boards. Speaker comments on individuals, speakers comment on individuals at their own risk of violating confidential laws and/or defaming the subject of their comments. Neither the school board, the superintendent, nor the school administration will respond publicly to any comments by speaker about individuals. Presentation of resolutions, declarations, proclamations, manifestos, awards, or other similar documents not originated out of the auspices of the school board or administration is prohibited during the public comment period. The audience is to ask, is asked to be respectful of all speakers. Public comment is the school board's opportunity to listen to the speaker. Since our purpose is to hear from you, the board will not engage in dialogue with the audience or whomever it is at podium. Matters requiring a response will be directed to the superintendent for research and response. The superintendent may report back on such matters at a subsequent business meeting session as appropriate. The school board carefully considers your comments as we decide matters that are brought before us. We appreciate your attendance and input.
Thank you, Ms. Charbonneau. Our first speaker this evening is, and I hope I pronounce it right, I'm trying to read the writing, Veronda Hudson.
Good evening, board members. My name is Veronda Hudson, and I stand before you today to speak out against some unlawful treatment I have endured being a special education teacher for the Hampton City School District. My civil rights was violated, particularly at Hampton High and Bethel High. These violations not only affect the students I serve, but also infringe upon my rights as an employee. Last year, I did meet with the executive director of HR to express concerns regarding special education policies, specifically the responsibilities of teachers with provisional licenses and issues related to my safety. Not only were my claims dismissed, but I was also retaliated against for filing the complaint, I later discovered through a FOIA request that my former administrators reached out to my new school and labeled me trouble and difficult to work with. reached out to my new school and labeled me trouble and difficult to work with. Um, some of my relevant legal protections is retaliation under the Civil Rights Act of 1964, First Amendment protections, Virginia Employment Discrimination Act, Fair Labor Standards Act. Additionally, I experienced ongoing violations at Hampton City, City Schools' own policies, including standards of employee conduct, confidentiality violations. This treatment I received at both Hampton and Bethel High led to significant emotional and mental distress, accumulating in a mental health condition. This treatment and the retaliatory actions I faced had forced me to medically resign from my position. My question for the board, how can parents, teachers, and advocates trust the district to ensure the safety and security and mental health of our students when the district fails to provide a safe and supportive environment for its teachers? Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker is Ms. Brenda Marks.
Chairman Woodhouse, Vice Chair Jackson Afanjah, board members, and Dr. Haynes, I stand before you tonight to advise you that once again, this board has adopted a policy that discriminates against your disabled population. I am talking specifically about the cell phone policy passed in December, most specifically the wording added after the neighborhood meetings that prohibits GPS tracking devices. The prohibition of these devices deny parents life-saving support used to keep autistic children and those with moderate to severe communication difficulty safe. I'm talking about Project Lifesaver Angel Sense and similar devices. Since December, I have reached out to Governor Youngkin's office, who assured me the V D O E was instructed to develop guidelines to be used in Virginia that conform to all laws regarding persons with disabilities. I spoke with the V D O E, who forwarded me their guidelines and assured me there is nothing in their guidelines that restricts or prohibits GPS tracking devices, and they cannot explain why Hampton chose to add it. They suggested that I seek legal advice. I have an appointment with the A C L U in approximately three weeks to address what the next steps to take to force the division to remove those words from this policy. I am aware of the exemptions, but in dealing with this board over the last 11 years, I have fought the battles I have fought, knowing there are parents who do not know what I know, and who may not have the time or energy to fight the fights for their children that we are faced with every day in getting our children the education they are legally entitled to. What happens from here on out is up to y'all. I'm talking about removing the words GPS tracking devices. I think it would be stupid to go to court over four words that are not in the D O E guidelines. I, I believe when they sent it to me, I emailed each and every one of you a copy of their guidelines. They don't know why y'all added it. Neither do I, except to create another fight for the parents and disabled children to have to fight. Thank you.
Thank you. We now move on to item eight from our agenda, information item 8.01, next meeting. Our next televised regular meeting will be, well, our next school board meeting will be a work session on Wednesday, February the 19th at 6:30 PM here in the Forum at Jones Middle School. Our next televised regular meeting will be on Wednesday, March the 5th at 6:30 PM, also here at Jones. Do we have any information items from Dr. Haynes?
Thank you, Chairman Woodhouse. Want to take a moment to once again express my sincere appreciation to our dedicated school board members during School Board Appreciation Month. While you were formally recognized earlier, I want to personally thank each of you for your commitment, leadership, and advocacy on behalf of our students, staff, and the entire Hampton City Schools community. Report cards for the second quarter were distributed last week on Tuesday, February 4th. We are now more than halfway through the school year, and on Monday, February 17th, all schools and offices will be closed in observance of President's Day. That concludes informational items from the superintendent, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Ms., Dr. Haynes. Do I have any information items from any board members? Mr. Samuels?
Thank you, uh, uh, Dr. Woodhouse. I just want to, uh, share with my fellow school board member and the viewing audience that last week I had the privilege of attending the Phantoms Phoebus High School National Signing Date, and three of our state champion signed letter of intention to attend the Norfolk State University.
Yes, they did.
And only one signed for Hampton University.
We only need one.
Any other board members?
Mr. Lucas, anything?
Uh, do I have any information items from our student rep?
Um, I would say in, in my position as student representative, I've had the opportunity to speak to a lot of, uh, high school students specifically, and as we know, this January, the, the cell phone policy has, um, taken an uproar to our students, and, um, there have been some suggestions, um, made by students that I would like to share with you all at a later date. Um, I'm not too sure how they fall in with the guidelines from the D O E, but I would like to, um, you know, speak to you all about that to see if there's any workaround that we can make.
Thank you, Mr. Lucas.
That'd be great.
Before we adjourn, want to take this opportunity to, uh, say a few words. I appreciate the comments made earlier by Ms. Cherry. We do appreciate the flexibility of our staff, and we do apologize for any inconvenience that the, the change in schedule for our meeting may have caused. One thing I was taught and that I have kept in mind most of my adult life and professional career, if we are a team, we never point fingers, because if you didn't help, then you caused the loss or the failure of the situation. So again, I say thank you, please accept all of our apologies for any inconvenience that's, that the change in meeting may have caused. This meeting is adjourned.